We're gonna start the meeting.
Frank Ferrari.
Here.
Marshall Goff.
Here.
Lilly Junkins.
Here.
Gary Keith.
Here.
Jim Malphojo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marina. Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
This evening, we have our prayer and pledge by Councilmember Ferrari.
Let us pray. See me, Lord, come to you as a council, as a city, representing, we represent the people that elected us. Please guide us that we make the right decisions, the best decision, in the interest of all the residents and businesses of Clarksburg. Dear Lord, also, keep in your prayers, keep in your prayers, all those who are less fortunate than us, and all those that are suffering, lonely in the United States, all over the world, various, various troubles, and problems, and sicknesses, and disasters. And dear Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us, and keep over us, and how you watch over us. And dear Lord, we do this in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands on a nation of honor, and individual liberty, and justice for all.
Petition, approval minutes, the regular session of May 6, 2021.
So move.
Second.
Without objection, the minutes are agreed to.
Petitions, communications, and public hearings. Martin Schaefer, 211 North Sixth Street, wishes to address council for team talk number four.
Good evening. I hope you've been learning something from my three-minute Martin talks. Maybe I should be addressing some of this to the candidates for the upcoming election. Communications. Yesterday, I was talking to the city manager, and he told me he didn't want to dwell on the past, that he wanted to focus on the future. I think that's a good sentiment, except for the fact that if you don't learn from the past, you're bound to repeat some mistakes. Over the past fifty years, the city of Clarksburg, we've had a lot of mistakes, and unfortunately, councils do not learn from these mistakes. This council has not learned from those mistakes. Our downtown has been dying for the past thirty years. Our city has failed the citizens of Clarksburg. Steptone Johnson was one of the biggest BNO taxpayers in downtown Clarksburg. They left the city of Clarksburg and moved to Bridgeport. Does anyone know why? It wasn't because they thought a house in a neighborhood should be torn down, it was more about the city ignoring them. I tell you this because, over the past fifty years, I've watched this egregious mistake dozens of times. Our family has invested millions of dollars in this city, and have paid over a million dollars in taxes and fees over to the city. Just yesterday, I found out that the city is not going to honor the agreement with our company, we had been waiting thirty-two years to bring sewage to our building on Armory Road. It took thirty-two years to get an answer, but I have an answer, which I really appreciate. Over fifty years, I've had the pleasure to train thousands of volunteers and employees. It took six hundred people to work a WVU football game, and each one had to go through training. We made it clear in our policies, you're expected to always be polite, friendly, and mannerly, not only to fellow workers, and especially to customers, or even potential customers at all times. You will be terminated immediately if caught, found guilty of misconduct. This simple paragraph obviously is not part of the training here. It is also very obvious that it's not a priority of this council, or any past council, that communications with the citizens is important. Why should a citizen come to a council, make a complaint, if no one's gonna follow through on it, and let them know it's been taken care of? Some of the problems I addressed two years ago still have not been addressed. This year, the state legislature has changed the law so that property owners can seek to be removed from a city. I will proceed to have our Armory Road property removed from the city. It was a mistake on my part to have asked to be inside the city of Clarksburg in nineteen eighty-nine. You see, I'm learning from my mistakes, and I will follow the example of our previous mayor, who did not put her home inside the city. If I had not agreed to that property, put that property in the city, my share of the savings would probably be about four hundred thousand dollars I would have in my pocket today. So, thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Margaret Short wishes to address council.
Nice to see everybody's faces. Okay, so, this year, I had a round of inspections of my rentals, and I follow the law, and so I set all those up, and most of them, she just couldn't find anything wrong, and she did, in one, she said, the GFCI outlet in the kitchen was not grounded. She said it had to be grounded, even though it worked, and you push the button, it popped like it's supposed to, but she said it had to be grounded. So I called an electrician. So, okay, so the electrician came, and he looked at it, and he said, well, you know, it's gonna be an expensive job to ground this wire, it's so far up in the box, and whatever all that means, if you're an electrician. But he said, it's not necessary, because the property maintenance code says, all you have to do is label the outlet. So he took a magic marker and wrote, "ungrounded" on the outlet cover, and sent me a bill for a hundred sixty-nine dollars. That's his minimum. Okay, now, I went to see the new code officer, Mr. Carr, and I brought him this bill, and told him that I shouldn't have to pay this. And he said he would get back with me, but it's been a couple weeks, so I thought I would present this to you all, and see what you all think about whether or not I should pay an electrician to come out when it wasn't necessary. So, that's why I'm here. I can give you a copy of this. I brought two copies with me.
I think, I think our city manager should get with Mr. Carr, and then follow up with us on it.
I can talk about it.
You can talk about it now, okay.
Sure. Mrs. Short, what actually happened was, the inspection was done. Your, the circuit did not trip, it did not pass inspection. So you got an electrician to come, which was normal, and he did his thing, and then it passed. The city is gonna take the stance, at least on my behalf, I mean, that we are not responsible to pay your bill, we will be setting a precedence, paying people for the, if they don't pass, and then they go hire somebody.
It did pass.
It did not pass. According to our records, it did not pass. It was considered a, I think it was a two-wire, it's an old wiring system, but the part of your dwelling that was inspected did have other electrical upgrades, where it's like the ground is built in, there's a three-wire, from my understanding. But from my understanding, it did not pass the first time, so you had the electrician come out, and certify it, which is homeowner, property owner's responsibility, and then we came back and passed it, or said it was able to be passed.
So, the electrician is wrong?
No, the process worked. Our inspector was there. It failed, you had an electrician come back, do whatever he did.
He didn't do anything.
Then it passed.
Only outlet.
Right, made it up to code, according to our standards, according to our books, and then it passed, is from my understanding.
He wasn't all there.
Okay, but then it did pass.
It passed because I went to town, and I gave him twenty outlets.
Okay. Well, I'm taking the stance that we're not responsible to pay your electric bill, or for the electrician.
That'll be fine. Next year, I won't call you, next time I won't call you, because you know why? I'm about ten percent, in the ten percent range, but the landlords have even given places to inspect.
That's fine.
So, I just won't call you, this is how it works. You just try to find something wrong, anything, find something wrong.
Tim Strankow, council for the Clarksburg Water Board, wishes to address council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here tonight with Paul Howe, who's one of our direct, one of our three directors, and with our new general manager, Jason Myers. And I know sometimes when attorneys show up, people get worried, this is conflict, or, you know, you hired a lawyer, you'll lawyer it up, or whatever it is, but my role at the Water Board is general counsel, is, I'm a member of the leadership team, at least, I hope Mr. Howe would agree with that, and I'm a member, when the board's not convened, I'm a member of Mr. Myers' staff. So I participate in all the meetings, and we talk about everything, about what's going on. I'm so proud to be with the board, it's a fifty-one million dollar physical plant, and we're serving over sixty thousand people, seven municipalities, seven public service districts, and we have been acknowledged by our peers as a leader in the industry, so I'm proud to be on this team. I just wanna make a few remarks about the relationship between city council and the Water Board, and, you know, the Water Board is an oddity, and there are three reasons why I say that. First is that, this was made up by the city of Clarksburg. The governance, the model, is not from state code, it's from the Clarksburg City Charter. So, number, first reason, state code doesn't address this. The second is that we have elected directors, as you know, three elected directors, and the third, and the one that's most significant, I think, the third reason I want to talk to you about tonight, just a little more detail, is, when the charter was written, and the Water Board was created, the legislative prerogative of the city council with regard to water matters was assigned to the Water Board. And the charter's clear, in section twenty-seven, that when the Water Board, when the charter was written, the Water Board assumed all municipal powers regarding water, and all matters with regard to the water business. So, I think it's an important aspect of the success we've had, is that the Water Board focuses on their mission to great success. When the Water Board needs an ordinance, what Article twenty-seven of the charter says, that city council shall enact the ordinance requested by the Water Board, I know that's odd, and that was the third of the three reasons this is an odd scenario, but it is, in fact, the charter's requirement, that when the Water Board sends a request for an ordinance, city council shall enact that ordinance. And you could go upstream and talk about the constitutional reasons why a city council, not a Water Board, needs to enact an ordinance. Mr. Myers just hit me with another theory today, but, you know, the squirrel on the bottom of the pile is, the charter is a difficult document to move around in sometimes, and we have to do our best to interpret, and to enact the will of the people of Clarksburg, because we're not talking about legislation, it's not legislative intent, the charter is about the intent of the people of Clarksburg. So we have to understand what that intent is, and read, in good faith, the provisions of the charter, and the charter says that when we at the Water Board request an ordinance, the council shall enact it. And, subject to your questions, Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Paul Howe, 315 South Chestnut Street, wishes to address council concerning the same matter.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you guys, mayor, council. I just would urge you guys to pass this ordinance, this is the first time in, I think, twenty years that we've asked for an ordinance in this matter. The last one I can remember was probably, I don't know, ten or twelve years ago, we asked for an ordinance to stop people from tampering with their meters. So before, there was nothing much we could do about it, you guys codified an ordinance, made it a law, and then the police could help us with anyone tampering. So we don't come very often, pass bonds, and, so again, I just ask for your passage, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, consideration of second and final reading of public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg to create an ordinance licensing and setting forth restrictions on mobile food vendors. Notices regarding the public hearing appeared in the expedited telegram on May eleventh and May eighteenth.
We're not open the public hearing, anyone speak for or against may do so at this time. We will now close the public hearing. So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
New business, consideration of first reading of an ordinance regarding licensee of contractors and handymen.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we skipped there. Where are we already right now? Go ahead.
I move that we have previous ordinance on first reading.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We inadvertently skipped over the city manager's report, so let's go ahead and do that now, and then we'll come back to the rest.
From the manager's office, the city of Clarksburg app for smartphones is almost complete, and with a planned launch by the end of June. Manager Falk attended the American Rescue Plan informational session hosted by Senator Joe Manchin and State Auditor John McCuskey. The list is expanding on how the funds can be used, an informational workshop session will be planned very soon. Work has begun on the sanitary sewer board budget and parking authority budgets to present to those boards next month, and the Clarksburg Beautification Committee presented the city with a mural located at the intersection of West Main and South Fourth Street, and the committee meets on the second Wednesday of every month at four thirty here at City Hall. For the Police Department, Patrolman Bender and K-9 Asta have completed their training, and are officially patrolling the streets. Say hi to K-9 Asta here.
Now we, now we have two on the streets, two K-9s.
Congratulations.
Very happy, that, very happy we've gone from zero to two in just two years, on K-9s, so.
Also, from the Police Department, Patrolman Moore is scheduled to graduate from the West Virginia State Police Academy next Friday, and background investigations have started on the fifteen applicants for the Police Department. For the Fire Department, they received sixty applicants for the position of firefighter, forty-six successfully completed their written test, making them eligible for the physical agility test, in which twenty-eight passed. Those twenty-eight will move on to the interview phase with the Civil Service Commission. The annual host testing has also started on South Sixth Street, and that may be blocked at various times for the test. For the Finance Department, we received notice from the State Auditor's Office that we can put out an RFP for the city audits for fiscal years 2021 and 2022. The RFP is being prepared, it will be advertised on May twenty-eighth. Proposals from three agencies have been received for the property and casualty insurance and workers' compensation, agent of record services. The proposals will be evaluated, and agencies will be interviewed in the next few weeks. Renewals for business licenses for year 2021, 2022 will be mailed out next week. If you do not receive a renewal, please contact the Finance Department. One hundred and fifty-one businesses are not in compliance with the 2020 DNO taxes, and will not be eligible for license renewals unless the accounts are brought into compliance. From the city parks, FASCO met with the superintendent and the pickleball group to discuss upgrading the courts. The cost estimates are from fifty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars for recoding and permanent pickleball nets, to two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars for repaving. The summer staff orientation was recently held, with individual training sessions are taking place, and the Health Department has granted permission to allow up to six hundred and fifty guests per day, a splash zone, and fifteen hundred at the amp. Tickets will go on sale tomorrow for the Jamison Roberts and Nico Moon concert scheduled for July ninth. From the Robinson Grant Performing Arts Center, during the month of May, the center has held twenty-two scheduled events, the schedule for 2021 is almost filled. From code enforcement, the department issued fifty building permits for a total project cost of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand and ninety-six dollars. Fifty-four notice of violations and zero citations were issued. Six structures were placed on the condemnation list. Twenty-two residential and eleven inspections were performed. Nine vehicles were tagged, and six signs were removed. Animal control responded to twenty-seven calls for service, with seven animals taken to HCAC, and four traps were set. Our engineers working on the Hayman Highway Bridge project, the Leon Slip Repair, and this year's paving project, and demolitions, and sewer phase four plant, and the roadside slip. For Public Works this week is National Public Works Week, we have forty-eight men and women dedicated to infrastructure services and waste and stormwater, public works, or public buildings and grounds, maintenance of our streets, and snow removal, traffic, and composting. Thank you for everything that you do for our community. Crews also worked around the clock to repair a major sewer line on West Main Street that created a sinkhole. They were able to dig a large area, replace three pipes, and restore it within twenty-six hours, with little disruption to downtown. From the wastewater treatment plant, the plant received one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty gallons of septic in the month of April, bringing in a revenue of eight thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents. The new septic receiving station is now accepting septic for the month, for the first time today, and the main gate shaft with the new actuated control system, a raw sewage pump, and two affluent pumps have been installed, and that's the end of my report.
Continued new business, consideration of first reading of an ordinance modifying personnel and administrative policies and procedures manual regarding longevity pay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this ordinance be tabled.
Second.
All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, tabled.
Consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease purchase agreement and related instruments, and determining other matters in connection therewith.
Mr. Mayor, for the financing for the new septic platform fire apparatus, I move that we award the financing to Freedom Bank, through Country Road Rescings, for a term of ten years, at an interest taxable interest, non-tax, tax exempt interest rate of one point seven, two five percent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of two appointments to the West Virginia Transit and the Central Board.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilman.
I move the appointment of Robert Kramer and Tracy Gray to the Central Board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
This time, we'll defer to council comments.
Start with Councilman Malphojo.
First of all, it was brought up in the city manager's report, I'd like to commend the Street Department, they did a heck of a job last night. I happened to be out walking and stopped, and I'm telling you, it was a real mess that they were in, and for them to get that done in twenty-six hours with little disruption to the city is amazing. Those fellows did an excellent job. Memorial Day weekend's coming up, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day, be safe, I'd like to recognize the candidates that are here for city council election, good luck, and that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Ferrari.
Yes, one thing on the manager's report, the city manager mentioned that the engineers working on the Hayman Highway project, and also the Leon Strip project, Leon Street Slip project, you know, and again, I think that, you know, one of the main, one of the main uses of these COVID funds is for infrastructure, and I really think that, you know, this is an opportunity for the city to take some of that money and complete some of these projects, because otherwise, if that money wasn't there, we would be looking at a major debt, or major financing, or bonds to get this done. So, I would hope that, certainly glad that the engineer's working on these projects, and hopefully, probably, the next council will be able to address some of these infrastructure projects, and also, as Mr. Malphojo said, I wish the, I wanna wish the candidates in the next election the best of luck. I think it's been a good campaign so far, and I'm sure it'll end up that way, and just wish all the candidates the best of luck, that's all I have.
Councilman Goff.
I also wanna wish the candidates luck in the next election, I think we got a good pool of candidates, and I know you all do a good job. The, I've got the, I see a little bit of the work that our Public Works was doing up there on Main Street, they did a real good job, they attacked it very quickly, solved problem, and they did a really good job, should be proud of them. I've got a question for our city attorney. I'm looking at the charter, and I've had some questions that was thrown at me, and I really didn't know the answers, because it's a little bit confusing. Did you write these?
The ones?
Yes.
Yes.
It says amendment, down on amendment number five, the amendment provides for a one-year extension to the terms of council members elected in nineteen or June of twenty-one. Who determines, what determines that?
Well, it is the issue that we have to have a mechanism to move from a, count from a council to a directly indirect election, so that's what was the issue there. You can't, you gotta extend it out, so that we switch over to have six council members plus a mayor, and that's the issue that combined with changing the, the amendment to change the election date to twenty twenty-two, or it needs to be twenty twenty-three. Remember, we also want to change the election date to the primary election year, which is the even year. So, ultimately, it's difficult to make everything work together, to change that election date, and also change from a seven-person council to make six-person council, plus a mayor.
And that's dependent on everything passing?
That's correct. The, I didn't write the first seven, I wrote the second, and now I recall, so what we need to look, so that's what the issue is.
Who wrote the first seven?
What, who wrote the first seven? Mr. Can and Mr. Chief wrote the first seven.
Okay.
So, I can take ultimately, you have to do is, you can't shorten some of these terms, obviously, and people come in in nineteen or twenty-one, they're in their end, and they're gonna come in, and they're gonna extend them out, to switch that over from a six, from a seven-member council to a six-member council plus a mayor.
I understand, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Keith.
Well, everybody already commented already, but the Public Works, you know, I think they do this stuff all the time, and we don't see it, because they're working in different corners of the city, but, man, they dug right in the middle of Main Street, we all got to see what they do, that was absolutely amazing, I mean, I went by several times, actually, just kinda nipping to see how they were doing, and that was pretty cool. I mean, the way they spread that hole out, and, I mean, they were down like probably twelve feet, I would guess, that was pretty amazing, and it is Public Works Week, so I just wanna recognize those guys for how awesome that was. When I look over this manager's report, you know, it seems like every week, there's things on here that excite me, but the fact that we're getting fifteen police officers back for background investigations, that's very exciting. Just wanna remind the city manager, we agreed to forty-eight, so get as many of these guys hired as we can, chief, as long as he likes them, and, but, that's all I really have, thank you very much.
Councilman Junkins.
Just wanna reiterate what everyone else was saying about Public Works, and what they did yesterday was pretty amazing, that no one was hurt, it didn't really cause a major disturbance within the city, and that we have an amazing Public Works Department, these guys work really hard to beautify the city, snow removal, street, keep the streets up, so I wanna commend them for all the work they do that's unnoticed a lot of times. I think sometimes they feel underappreciated, but we see what they do, and we appreciate what they do, we're putting them to work, the beautification- The Beautification Committee's really putting them to work this year with a lot of different projects, and they've been, they've done a really good job, and I tease Johnny Workman and say, dream it, and they can build it, so they've done a great job, and I appreciate their work and effort. I think that's it. Happy Memorial Day. Good luck to all the candidates. Be ready.
The, well, I just want to hit a few things quickly. Again, I'll be the seventh person up here to congratulate Public Works on the great job they did last night. It's appropriate that it is National Public Works Week, that we really got to see a showcase of what they're able to do during the week that's dedicated to honoring them. The fact that it, that it happened within twenty-six hours, and there were no injuries or fatalities while doing it is pretty amazing, so, you know, hats off to them. Also want to remind everybody that early voting has started, and Election Day is June first. Early voting is here at City Hall. Election Day is wherever you normally vote, wherever your precinct normally is, and there are four seats for council open, there are two Water Board seats, and there's also five charter amendments, so, and, and if you want to know anything more about the charter amendments or the candidates, nine AM on Saturday at the PWA, there's going to be what's probably the only candidate forum of this election, where you can meet candidates, and I'll actually be there to answer, answer questions about charter amendments as well. And the only other thing, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy Memorial Day, which, as a veteran, is kind of special for me, because it reminds me of those that didn't get the chance to be veterans, because they didn't get to come home in one piece, and unfortunately, some of my friends that I went through basic training with years ago are among them, and so I will be going to the graveyard and planting the flags and honoring their memory, and then, and then eating some hamburgers and hot dogs, too. So I'd encourage everybody else to do the same. That's all I have with that. I will entertain, want to announce the...
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to Chapter Six, Article Nine A, Section Four of the West Virginia Code, I move that council adjourn into executive session to discuss legal matters at the following persons present, mayor and members of council, city manager and city attorney.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for an executive session.
Well, I'm going to hang a reel, but I just want to go over, get some stuff done.